So, stand where you are if we're gonna do the pledge.
The allegiance to the flag, United States of America. Republic of Washington.
Okay, as I described it to everyone, the procedure here will be that the mayor's going to do the roll call. He's gonna introduce the item. He's going to go through the list of you so that you can each comment on the item in order so that we don't speak up over each other because nobody will be able to hear any of that. And then, um, once we've all had the opportunity to speak, uh, then we'll, we'll do a vote. And we'll just, he'll go through it as many times as he needs to, to give you the opportunity to speak. Okay? Okay, go.
Yes, sir.
Okay, hang on, do a roll call.
Mayor Hasler?
Here.
Alderman Smith?
Here.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Here.
Alderman Jokers?
Here.
Alderman Donovan?
Here.
Alderman Rainey?
Here.
Alderman Prince?
Here.
Alderwoman Arbrooster?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Very good. Uh, the first bit of business, as you all know, Jimmy Jones has resigned, and I would like the approval of the board to nominate and appoint, well nominate, they're gonna appoint Jeff Ideman to fill that position until the election in June.
Motion to approve.
Gotta say your name.
Joe Prince, a motion to approve.
Second.
Who's the second?
Alderman Smith, seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 As proposed.
Any opposed?
Okay, absent, what we're gonna do is, we're always gonna ask the all in favor and any opposed, and if we don't hear any opposed, we'll assume everybody voted in favor.
Very good, it takes us to Resolution 2020-21, a resolution authorizing certain city officials to conduct banking and financial business for the city of St. Genevieve.
This is adding happy to the signature list on the, uh, bank accounts.
Motion to approve, Bob Donovan.
I got a motion, uh, first by Bob Donovan, and a second by who?
Joe Prince.
Joe Prince, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. So, at 5:35, we're gonna do a, we're going into a public hearing. Uh, the mayor and the board of aldermen of the city of St. Genevieve will hold a public hearing to consider an annexation petition filed with the city on March 6, 2020 by GHS Holdings LLC. All territory annexed to the city of St. Genevieve is classified as an R1 single-family residential upon annexation. All of this particular parcel known as 21561 Highway 32 is in St. Genevieve County, Missouri, and is contiguous and compact to the existing city limits of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri. Bob Donovan, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, sir.
Buck Jokers, do you have any questions?
No, mayor.
Ashley, do you have any questions?
No.
Suzie, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Joe Prince, you have any questions?
No, sir.
Mike Rainey, any questions?
I do not, thank you.
Gary Smith?
No, mayor.
Okay, thank you. So, without said, all in favor? No.
It's a public hearing.
Public hearing.
Close of a public hearing.
Alright, so at, uh, 5:36, we'll close the public hearing. Now we go on.
May I have to do my next one?
Okay, so, at five, uh, at 5:37, we're going to have another public hearing. Public hearing number two, the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of St. Genevieve will hold a public hearing to consider a request from Jason and Ashley Stackel for a special use permit to operate a guest lodging room commonly known as vacation rental by owner or Airbnb at 996 Market Street with, which is in R2 general residential zoning district. Such use is permitted in an R2 residential zone district with a special use permit. Buck, you have any questions?
No, sir.
Bob, any questions?
No, sir.
Ashley, any questions?
No.
Suzie, any questions?
No.
Joe Prince? Joe?
Only quest, only question I have is, has there been any opposition, uh, come in the city hall regarding this at all?
We have received no comments.
I have no other questions.
Thank you, Joe. Mike Rainey?
Nothing here, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, and Gary?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll close that public hearing at 5:38.
Now you have a motion to approve on this one.
On this one here?
Yes.
Okay, now, do I have a motion to approve the?
Special use permit.
The special use permit.
Joe Prince, motion to approve.
I got a, I got a Suzie, I got a first.
Suzie Johnson, second.
Okay, Joe Prince first, Suzie second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there any opposed? Ayes had it. We'll close the public hearing at 5:39. We're gonna open up another public hearing at 5:39. Okay, the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of St. Genevieve will hold a public hearing to consider the rezoning of the following property upon annexation, or did you scratch that out?
She scratched it out.
Okay, alright, a following property from an R1 single-family residential to a C1 general commercial district, tract of land being part of the United States Survey 98 and 99 Township 38 North Range 9 East St. Genevieve County, Missouri, and being part of a larger tract conveyed to Vernon Bowman by D. Book 3212, page 2 of the St. Genevieve County Land Records, also known as 21561 Highway 32.
Let's just ask them if there are any questions instead of going through it.
Is there any questions?
No questions from Bob Donovan.
Hearing none.
Hearing none. So we need a motion to carry, to approve that?
We need to close the hearing. You have to declare the hearing closed.
I declare the hearing closed at 5:40.
Now the rezoning will be an ordinance.
Okay, there you go. That takes us to new business. Bill number 4355, an ordinance approving a pandemic virus preparedness plan for the employees of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri for mitigating the spread of a pandemic virus.
Do you have 4358 on your agenda? I inadvertently left it at all. Can we add it?
We can hear you.
What is it?
It's the zoning change from an R1.
Yeah, well, we need to do that. Stand by, Mark's considering the issue.
Did I send it in the packet?
No, well, I don't know how to get a packet.
Well, the, uh, we're getting a little ahead of ourselves.
No, I do not see it, Pam.
Yeah, so, I mean, we, we have the rezoning subject on the agenda. We have copies of the ordinance available to the public, although there's no public here, uh, because they've chose not to attend, chosen not to attend, so I'm comfortable moving forward with it tonight.
So, we can just read it and, uh, by title?
Correct.
And I apologize, I, I had it in and I didn't add it.
Yeah, you need to speak like you're speaking to them way far away.
Okay.
Okay, proceed.
Where were I, where was I, on, on new business?
Gary, you made a motion to approve, correct?
Yes, Gary Smith made a motion to approve.
I will second that, Joe Prince.
Joe Prince is second?
They're approving the first reading of Bill number 4355.
Okay. All in favor?
No, you asked for discussion.
Oh, wait a minute, sir, any discussion? I know there was some, this is a topic to discuss.
Now go through their names.
Buck, you have anything to discuss?
No, sir.
Bob Donovan?
Um, what revisions were made to that prior to?
Well, the preparedness plan, uh, this is just a plan of how the city, uh, is planning on dealing with the pandemic, and I'm not aware of any, any changes to that recently.
There was a DeSoto, city of DeSoto, so I put city of St. Genevieve in that.
I apologize.
That's okay. That was the only change that was made.
Okay, I think the, the issues are with the supporting ordinance that's coming up here.
Yeah, so the, the preparedness plan does not address the, um, additional sick leave benefit.
Correct, okay, I don't have any further questions.
Okay, Ashley, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, not on the preparedness plan, no.
Thank you. Suzie?
No, sir.
Joe Prince? Joe, any questions?
Negative.
Uh, Mike Rainey?
Okay, so to clarify, uh, 4355 doesn't address the sick leave policy at all?
Yeah, I believe that, uh, the references to the sick leave were deleted from that preparedness plan. I've, I'm sorry, I've gotta look through it here real quick because I've got several of these circulating with different cities, I gotta make sure I'm talking intelligently about your, your plan.
Sure, sure.
But the, uh, right, so, so by adopting this preparedness plan, uh, it's just with regard to the management of the, of the city during a pandemic and does not provide for any additional benefits from the employees.
I think the confusion here is, it appears that this bill has the same number as the bill that will establish the sick leave, and two, two of those bills were proposed and it, wait a minute, Pam's looking.
I don't think so because here's 4355 and here's 4356.
Right, so what's the bill for the, for the procedure, this is the plan?
The, the plan is 4355 that we're on, and then the 56 is the one that covers the sick leave policy that Mark sent with option one and option two.
Right.
So that's just.
Okay, well, I have 435.
My question, my question's premature then, we can, we can discuss that as 4356, but when we read 4356, we'll hear two versions of that bill, correct?
Well, what I want you to do is, uh, if we can discuss, uh, that, those issues after we get done with this preparedness plan and, and maybe we don't have to read both of them depending on how the discussion. That's what, that's how I would prefer to do it.
Certainly, that's, that's all I guess, thank you.
Gary Smith?
Yeah, but they were numbered just.
Any questions on this one?
4355.
No, sir.
Okay, and I already have, uh, do we have a motion? I got ahead of myself, I think we have Joe and Suzie.
You had a motion and a second, and I asked you to stop for discussion.
Okay, so, all in favor of this, of Bill number 4355?
Of the second.
Of the first reading?
Aye.
Yes, now.
Any opposed? Like to have a motion for, a motion and a second for a second reading on Bill number 4355.
Joe Prince, motion for a second reading?
I'll second, Alderman Prince.
Okay, Alderman Prince is the first motion, and Gary Smith the second. So that's Bill number 4355, an ordinance approving a pandemic virus preparedness plan for the employees of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri for mitigating the spread of a pandemic virus. Have a first and a second, and I'll need a roll call vote, please.
We need a motion to adopt.
Buck Jokers, first. I'm sorry.
Buck, just did the first.
I'm sorry.
We have Buck as a first.
Gary, second.
Now I'll need a roll call to adopt this procedure. I mean, this.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderwoman Arbrooster?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, Bill number 4355 now becomes ordinance 40, 4380.
Thank you all, takes us to Bill number 4356, an ordinance establishing pandemic sick leave policy and declaration of pandemic emergency.
Do you want me to go ahead and?
Let's have some discussion here, alright.
So, um, I'm not exactly sure, you know, what, what everybody needs to know about this, uh, as I, um, I sent an email to the, to the board today with some, some legal advice. Uh, this is a brand-new benefit, um, and so, some cities, some cities, I believe, a few cities had this type of benefit on their books, uh, before, I don't know if they were provided, uh, back in the, the H1N1 or the SARS, but, but this, this preparedness plan and, uh, pandemic sick leave policies have been kind of bouncing around, and so the, there's a format in, in some cities, and the Missouri Municipal League has been sharing, you know, what other cities are doing, and so we've had the benefit of seeing what other cities have done, and, um, and some cities are, are, have adopted these pandemic sick leave policies because the thought is, you want to protect your employees especially because we deal with the public, or the employees, and I say we, but I mean, the employees of the, of the city deal with the public, uh, and are required to do essential services for the public and therefore a little bit more at risk, and you want to protect them and provide them with that additional benefit. Uh, so, you certainly are within the discretion of the authority of, of the city to provide these additional benefits, no matter what you decide. Uh, the, the federal government has recently passed, um, a statute that is, uh, rather quickly passed, and it's effective April 1st, and it's the, uh, it provides for two additional benefits that did not exist before under federal law, and they apply to all employers that employ under 500 people and all public entities, which includes the city of St. Genevieve. Uh, the, the two benefits are complementary, but they're in separate statutes essentially, and so the, the overlap, I guess, is what I'd say, and so, they, there's a sick leave policy which provides for paid time off up to 80 hours for full-time employees, uh, under certain circumstances, uh, and then, uh, a lesser payment, uh, the two-thirds pay for other reasons for, for the equivalent of what would have been 80 hours. Part-time employees would be also entitled to this benefit, and that their hours would be based upon their average hours over the previous six months, uh, if applicable, and so if they, if they're employed less than that, then you do the math, and you figure out what they would have earned over an average two-week period, and that's what they'd be entitled to. Um, the, um, the statute that authorized this states that healthcare, uh, workers in the healthcare field and emergency responders, employers of those types of employees are exempt from this requirement. Um, then there's the separate benefit, but you still have the benefit for the employees. So the separate benefit is an expansion of the Family and Medical Leave Act, uh, which I think we're all kind of familiar with as far as leaves for, uh, medical reasons or to care for someone that, under certain qualifying circumstances. What this, uh, law also applies to all employers for 500 people or less, um, and applies to the, the city generally and public entities generally, um, allows for employees under certain circumstances to take up to 12 weeks of, of a leave of absence, the first 10 days are unpaid, however, the other sick leave policy would kick in and that would be covered. Um, and so the guidance from the Department of Labor indicates that you get 10 weeks of, of paid sick leave from this benefit, assuming that the sick leave benefit I just described would, would pay for the first two weeks. So after the first two weeks, you would, the employees would then be entitled to, um, two-thirds of their pay for 10 weeks if they meet certain qualifying reasons, which I circulated to you the summaries of those, so, and those are contained within, uh, the, the ordinances, so, what, what I've presented to you were, were two, um, options, and you have other options if you want to select something differently. Uh, the first one is a 14-day pandemic sick leave policy which would provide for the equivalent of 14 workdays as a sick leave benefit, it would be a permanent benefit, so if, if there's a declared pandemic by the city or, um, really by the city at that point, uh, then this benefit would kick in under those circumstances, so then you'd have it established, you've established a pandemic preparedness plan that of course can be amended or altered over time by ordinance, and so this benefit would, under that option is, is more than what's required by federal law, uh, but, like I said, you can certainly do that, or you can do something different. Uh, the second option was the minimum, uh, authorized or mandated by federal law, assuming that applies to as well, so there's, uh, there's an exception, uh, that exempts employers of employees in the healthcare field and also for first responders, we do employ first responders here, uh, I, I do not know yet if that exempts us as an employer, or it just exempts certain employees from that requirement. Uh, we won't have Department of Labor regulations enacted until April, and so it's gonna be either at the same time it's a, it's, it's in force or after we will actually know how they're going to enforce it and interpret it, which is an unfortunate situation, so, um, uh, that's kind of the, the rundown, the, oh yeah, the second option that I have presented provides this benefit only during the applicable period of time the federal mandate exists, which is April 1st of this year to December 31st of this year, at which time it will end, and then the future board would have to deal with it, uh, going forward if they wanted to have this, this type, type of benefit in the future for some other pandemic type situations, so there's a drawback to that, you would not have something established, you'd have to, then, or they would have to recreate that at, at that time or reconsider it at that time. I don't know if that answers.
That last statement you made contradicts the statement in one of your emails about adopting it and having it on the books for, for when you need it.
Well, the, the first option has that, the first option does not, I don't think I have a termination date on the first option.
Well, the question is that it's, in effect, one of the questions that Suzie Johnson brought up was that it mentions qualifiers all have to do with COVID-19.
Well, that is true, that is, that is true, right, so yeah, so the, the first statute is designed for COVID-19 and so, yeah, and it would have to be with regard to this pandemic, so.
Which is fine, I don't think that's a bad policy.
No, you're, you're right, that is a, a good point. Unless COVID-19 comes back in 2021, it wouldn't apply to other pandemics for other diseases that we do not anticipate now, you're right.
Mark, this is Alderman Donovan, uh, um, wanted to make sure I understood this, but under your second option, it's basically the 10 days, uh, sick leave, which is mandated, uh, all of the sections under B are all mandated, uh, and section D, part-time employees are also mandated, uh, under the sick leave policy.
That's correct, so the, the option two is the minimum that's required by the federal, the new federal law, assuming that it applies to the city, and we don't seek an exemption because of, we employ first responders.
Does that clear things up for you, Buck? Buck, do you have any questions?
Yes, um, you know, the one question, I guess, that came up was basically whether we're gonna require the employees to use their already-in-place sick time, um, are we gonna allow them to use this first and basically hang on to their, uh, whatever the city provides as far as paid time off already, is that correct?
That, that's a good question, this is a new, uh, benefit, the sick leave benefit is new and is in addition to any benefits the employer had in place at the time, so the answer is yes, they would be using this, uh, first, and then they would be using any other accrued sick or vacation time, so it, it has to be in addition to whatever you already provide them.
But does the mandate state that they have to use this first?
Um... I, I don't know under what circumstance the employee wouldn't use it first, it, it's a, it's a defined benefit for a particular pandemic, and I would expect the employees would, would always want to take this first, and we have to provide that option. We can't, we can't keep them from taking this new benefit first, I'll say that, and I can't envision when an employee wouldn't take this first because they could always save the others for various other reasons.
Okay, yeah, it seems like it's, it's pretty clearly mandated all of these things, you know, even though there's several under section B, you know, where basically a person can self-diagnose themselves, uh, and apply for this benefit, plus they can also, um, look out after other people's, uh, dependents because of a closed daycare or closed school and still apply for this benefit and receive it.
Yes, uh, there will be, I, I anticipate, under some circumstances, there'll be difficulties with, uh, enforcement of these requirements, um, and that would be especially true with regard to the 12-week leave of absence, which was not before you today, um, but, uh, we don't have any guidance, they, they have to have a need, uh, with regard to the care of the children, and the Department of Labor has only said that it has to be a bona fide need, so, we may end up in a situation, I can envision some of my clients being in a situation where we, we end up having to dispute whether or not they needed to take care of a son or daughter, like if they have a, a senior in high school at home, uh, I would expect my clients to dispute whether or not they have to be off work for two weeks to take care of a senior in high school, uh, or a junior, I have a junior at home, he can take care of himself, so, uh, but there may be circumstances where you have a special needs child that is that age that they would have to be home, so, a lot of that's gonna be determined on the, on the, on the individual facts, I think at this point, because there is no guidance from the Department of Labor because they haven't created any, uh, you're just gonna have to trust that people will be honest with you and only use the, the benefit if they absolutely need it.
This seems like the, seems like the federal government has handed us an open-end, uh, book here.
Well, all you're providing with this policy is a certain number of sick days that are in addition to your current policy, so that's what we're talking about today. Uh, I've advised the city and you all to, to wait a little bit with regard to the extended leave until we get some more guidance as to how that's gonna be implemented and, and under what conditions that would take effect, so what we're talking about today is, you know, either 14 days off or some number, um, certainly some number between 80 hours, uh, off for this particular purpose and, and any number higher than that.
Bob, is that?
Yeah, the 14-day kind of came from the quarantine period, and I think several aldermen have pointed out that the 80 hours, if you add the, the weekends, accomplishes the 14-day quarantine period, so I, I, I think the one that we've been discussing here achieves the goal.
Right, the second alternative.
So, that would be the one, 80 hours, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I need. Thank you.
Ashley, do you have any questions on this?
No, I think my questions were answered with Mark's resources, and then the option two that was added, so I think I'm good.
Thank you, Ashley. Susie, you have any questions?
I do have one. Mark, so in Option Two, Section B, Number Five, it states the employee is caring for a son or daughter of such employee. That means that this needs to be a son or daughter of the employee requesting the time off. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I think there was some confusion about if the employee could take care of someone else's child. It has to be the employee's child.
That is correct, and this language is borrowed directly from the statute itself.
Susie, you had a question about the effective date.
Well, no, this Option Two spells out April 1st, and that was my concern, but Option Two does specify, so if that's what everybody's agreeing on, then I'm happy with those dates. Thank you.
Joe Prince, you have any questions? Mike Rainey, do you have any questions?
Well, again, Bill 4356 asked us to consider Option Two, which is a total of 80 hours. Is that correct?
That's right.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Gary Smith, you have any questions?
No, sir. Fine, thank you very much.
The only one I missed was Joe. I didn't hear anything from you, Joe. I take it nothing?
Joe was at work, he may have had to go.
I think he's having a cigarette. Very good. So, we have a first and a second, or we even get there?
No, we didn't.
So, I'd like to have a, there is no further discussion. Bill Number 4356, an ordinance establishing pandemic sick leave policy in declaration of pandemic emergency. Do I have a first? Do I have a motion, please?
And this would be.
I would make that motion, Mayor Buck Jokers.
And this is with regard to Option Two.
This is Option Two. Everybody agrees it's Option Two. So, I have Buck making.
Motion for a second.
Joe Prince has a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I would like to have a motion for a second reading.
For a second reading, Buck Jokers.
Buck has a.
Second reading from 4356.
So, I have Buck, and I have Gary. So, Bill Number 4356, an ordinance establishing pandemic sick leave policy and declaration of pandemic emergency. Have a roll call, please.
We need a motion.
A motion, I need a motion in a second. Joe Prince, motion to approve.
Buck Jokers, second.
Now, we have a roll call vote, please.
Alderwoman Johnson? Alderwoman Johnson?
We lost her.
Alderman Smith?
Yeah.
Alderman Jokers?
Yeah.
Alderman Donovan? Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderwoman Armbruster?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
She got disconnected and can't return to the call.
What about?
Alderman Donovan? Did he get disconnected?
You have five votes.
Yeah, you passed.
Okay, five yes.
Two absent.
Zero knows, two absent. Bill Number 4356 now becomes Ordinance 4381.
Thank you. Takes us to Bill Number 43.
Are you back? I was disconnected, sorry. I'm back now. I believe David's been disconnected as well.
Who has? Bob?
Uh, no, David, but I don't know that we need him for this.
No, he's.
So, I'm sorry, did I miss the vote?
Yes, it passed. How would you like to vote?
If it's Option Two, I would vote yes. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Swear me out. Bill, so we're moving on to Bill Number 4357, an ordinance providing for the annexation to the city of St. Genevieve existing corporate limits, certain real estate property owned by GHS Holdings LLC, 21561 Highway 32. Do I have a motion? I have a first by Joe, and do I have a second?
Second by Buck Jokers.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Not opposed? Like a motion for a second reading?
For a second reading, Buck Jokers.
Joe Prince, do I have a second?
Second, Buck Jokers.
All in favor of a second reading?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Takes us to Bill Number 4357, an ordinance providing for the annexation to the city of St. Genevieve existing corporate limits, certain real estate property owned by GHS Holdings LLC, 21561 Highway 32. Do I have move for approval?
Motion to approve.
I have Joe Prince, a motion approved first, and Buck Jokers a second. I'll have a roll call, please.
Alderman Smith?
Yeah.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yeah.
Alderman Donovan?
We lost him.
Alderman Rainey?
Yeah.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderwoman Armbruster?
Yes.
Six yes, zero knows, one absent. Bill Number 4357 now becomes Ordinance 4382. And then, this is the one that, this is the one that I left off, and it's currently off.
So, it should be Bill Number 4358, and if you could just follow the same procedure you did with 4357.
Okay.
Do you want me to read?
Yes, I'll let you read.
Okay, Alderman, this is the bill that I left off, and it's an ordinance approving a zoning change from an R1 single-family residential to a C1 general commercial district for 21561 Highway 32.
Alderman Smith, motion to approve.
Alderman Prince, second.
Got a first and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Need a second reading.
Motion for a second reading.
For a second reading, Buck Jokers.
Do I have a second? Gary Smith, second. An ordinance approving.
Any in favor of that?
I'm sorry, all in favor? For the second reading? Any opposed? Thank you. An ordinance approving a zoning change from an R1 single-family residential to a C1 general commercial district for 21561 Highway 32.
Gary Smith, motion to approve.
Joe Prince, second.
Jokers, second.
Okay, well, I got Gary Smith, and I got Joe Prince. All in favor?
I'm sorry, roll call vote?
Roll call.
Alderman Smith?
Yeah.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yeah.
Alderman Donovan? Alderman Rainey?
Yeah.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderwoman Armbruster?
Yes.
Six yes, zero knows, one absent. Bill Number 4358 now becomes Ordinance 4383.
Well, is there any other business we need to take care of?
Yeah.
Mark has got some business.
This is a marginal success. I think it meets the test of our public meeting, but I'm not real happy kind of with the dynamics of it. How do you want to proceed going forward?
If we need them, we'll do the same thing. If we don't need them, we won't do anything.
Okay. The, I will, if you think this gets the job done, then that's fine. We'll just continue.
What do you think, Mark?
Well, I think we.
Well, the mayor may be a little bit more organized, but we're all right.
Oh, I apologize for letting you get off, too.
You're right, I agree, Joe.
The meeting was sufficient. I mean, it's always difficult when you don't have people here. You know, we might want to look into video conferencing.
What would the visual add? Because you're going to have the same.
Because it's easy to, you can see, you can see everybody, which adds some dynamic, but you can also, you'll have icons to mute yourself so that every, so then I know and I can see who's muted and who's not. And so, it's a lot easier as the meeting is progressing, you can see somebody else pop off the mute button, and you expect they're going to say something, so you keep yours muted. And it's just like the speakerphone. If you all talk at once, nobody can hear anybody. And so, it is a little bit more organized, and you can see who's attending.
In order to do that, you would all have to have adequate computers at home, you know, and we would subscribe to a service like Zoom or GoToMeeting, and then you would log. Pardon?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I concur. I think Zoom, for example, would be good, and if we would go around and take a roll real quickly to see who all have internet connectivity and can do that, that might help.
You also would have the option of calling in. So, I know with GoToMeeting, we had some people that were attending, but they were not board members, just by telephone. They can participate by voice, so you have that option even if your internet connection or if you have bad internet connection. But I'd want, I want as many as we can to have video conferencing, because with video conferencing legally, it's as if you're here. And so, we don't have to worry about declaring an emergency and all that and having that in our minutes, which weighs the requirement for your personal appearance as we had to do or have to do with regard to this telephone conference. So, I mean, you've tried this, it works for what it is. You know, I would suggest you try the other option, because if nothing else, it'll be a complex telephone conference, you know.
Does anybody not have adequate internet access to achieve that?
The question was, does anybody in the room not have adequate internet to connect to the.
I should need a desktop or a laptop.
No, you can do it on your phone.
Or on the phone, I guess. Holy cow, how would you?
It's an app.
All right.
Another advantage of using something like Zoom is that we could actually watch you go through this, and so, whatever bill you're reading, we see it on the screen.
Right.
Okay, and I'll call Bob to make sure he does. I'm sure he does. And we'll investigate it. Now, the only thing, you know, we don't have a large screen connected to the computer display here. All we have is a television set, so.
Call for him. Bob Donovan.
Well, that new TV I recommended would fill that gap, certainly.
Are you back, back, Bob?
This is mine, Rainey.
Oh, he's calling. Bob trying to call me, and I got him.
Oh, I got you.
So, I just had a Surface, and it worked fine for me.
A what?
I just had a Surface, and it worked fine for me.
A Surface.
You know.
A laptop.
Yeah, smaller than a laptop.
No, it worked fine for you, but what about public?
Oh, okay, we just can just make one available. People can watch it from up there.
It's not, it's more a TV.
Hello, Joe?
Hey, let me jump in real quick. I'm sorry to interrupt, but are there going to be any more decisions made? Because I'm at work, and I kind of need to get back to work.
Go back to work.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, thank you. Bye.
So, if there's, so everybody's got the access, we'll try something new and improve next time. So, if there's no, is there any more business that needs to be taken care of?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, this is Mike Rainey. I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
I can't imagine that I, why I would want to do this to myself, but is there any, anything that would prohibit me from doing a Facebook Live from my perspective of this meeting the next time?
No, there's nothing to prohibit it.
Nothing to prohibit it.
Okay. Okay, I mean, I think it might be fairly painful and be a circus, but I mean, I may try to do that to add some visibility, so.
Well, if you do a video conferencing through one of these apps, you would provide the link to the public, and the entire, the entire thing is going to be streaming live.
I like that better, yeah.
Is there anybody else? When I hear nobody else, I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all very, very much.